Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with the change to remove D?
So move.
Motion by Dave, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Warren. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries, four in favor, none against. At this time, is our June 4th minutes, is there any changes or corrections to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Warren and seconded by Dave. Any discussion? I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries, four in favor, none against. At this time, is our public open forum, is anybody here who wishes to address the council? Anybody wish to address the council? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll go right into our police department monthly report, Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our February report for May 2014, several numbers we had. We had six alarm calls, twenty-two assists for people, twenty-seven assists for other agencies, two-fifth degree controlled substance arrests, fifteen non-impairments, seven driving, either canceled or suspended, and six driving complaints, ten small amount marijuana arrests, two family murder arrests, ten juvenile problems, fifteen liquor license for this month, thirty-one matter of information calls, eight medicals, ten head center reports, eleven suspicious activity calls, seven deaths, five unwanted person calls. For traffic, we did three hundred forty-four warning warnings. So total calls we had were three hundred eighty-eight. Verbal warnings, three hundred forty-one, for a total of seven twenty-nine. We also worked we also worked approximately thirty hours of TZD for this month. We look at compared to April, our calls were up eighty-seven. Our warnings were up one hundred sixty-six, for a total activity of two hundred fifty-three. And see, compared to 2013, calls are down thirty-eight. Warnings were up eighty-five, and total activity up forty-nine. Pretty comparable for May, when it starts to get pretty busy, I mean, traffic probably dealt with.
Brian, is it pretty common that in the, in May is when we do the additional hours of TZZ patrol or joint patrol?
I would see that. For this time, with the amount of traffic, I see that's really important.
Okay, and then matter of information, thirty-one seems like an extremely high number.
Uh, yeah, a lot of people are calling in, giving us the information, and that includes a lot of other miscellaneous calls, but people being pretty active, and usually see that in the summertime, people can be more active. Things are going on, know people are also intense as well.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions from Brian in regards to the police department report? Thank you, Brian. Moving on to the planning commission report, Sarah?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet, page maybe thirteen, we had a meeting on Tuesday, June tenth, a regular planning commission meeting. We did not have any public hearings at that time or at that meeting. We had the standard building reports for April and May, and some unfinished business that we'll be holding a public hearing for in July. Will be to amend the general regulations for nuisance complaints, and we're going to be looking over and reviewing some of the nuisance about parking and storage, and also inoperable motor vehicles. And also, we discussed fees, violation fines, and compliance enforcement. And a couple of new business things that, with the new work that's being done out at the multipurpose park, there was an encroachment on city property, so we were addressing that. And also, there was a proposal for a property exchange, and we're still working with the owner on that. And there are some informational items about continuing education events, and the Sterns County Hazardous Waste Mobile Unit that was held on Saturday.
Okay. Any questions for Sarah? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to our action items, action item seventy, fire relief pension. Vicki?
Okay, the fire relief department here, and I think there's quite a few of them here in attendance, are presenting a proposal to increase the pension per year of service that is an amendment to their bylaws. This benefit is paid to eligible retired firefighters at the time of their retirement. It's calculated based on years of service. The investments for the relief association are the source of the revenue for this payment, and the relief association is funded through a combination of state aid and municipal contributions. Historically, the city has contributed thirty-five hundred per year, this was raised for 2014 to forty-five hundred, and there's been a couple of years where we actually had to make up some additional funding for shortfalls. But generally, that's about the amount that is contributed. The investment portfolio is what covers that, and that did see a decline in the recent years, but it has recovered, and it's now at ninety-eight percent, so it would cover ninety-eight percent of this proposed pension. Now, this is calculated as if all the firefighters retired at one time. So that's how they base that on. The, what I did put in there was a history of the pension per year, and I do have one correction. That sixteen-seventy-five increase we did in 2013 was for 2013, and now the proposal tonight is to go to seventeen-seventy-five for 2014. So that is the change to the staff report. I did provide to you the documentation that was provided by the relief association that gives you some bullet points and some information about the relief. I don't know if I need to go into that in detail, you've had it in advance and have the ability to look at that. In addition, there's a spreadsheet that kind of shows the history, and it goes back all the way to nineteen-eighty-seven regarding the pension benefit amount, what the city has contributed, what money the relief association has since donated back to the city for things such as firefighting equipment, et cetera. So the relief association is presenting to the council tonight their proposal to increase the benefit amount from sixteen-seventy-five to seventeen-seventy-five per year of service, and that would be effective for 2014. The reason that that comes to city council for approval or for acknowledgement is that if there is a shortfall, then the city is obligated to make up that change. And so that is why it comes before the city council whenever there is a proposed change. If anybody has any questions, otherwise representatives from the relief can answer those for you as well.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
I have only one question, is it acknowledged or approved?
Well, it's, that's the thing that the league always goes back and forth, so I just cover it both ways. Now, I say, well, you acknowledge their increase is the same thing as approving it, so.
All right. So we might call it acknowledgement, but if we disapproved it, it would not go through?
They could still raise it, but then you may not have the same obligation, but because we've done it in the past, you're already committed. So that's.
So acknowledgement would be the more appropriate word, then? If we can't disapprove it?
And the league of Minnesota cities goes back and forth year to year on what the correct language should be, but they said rule of thumb is if you've approved it and acknowledged it and accepted it in the past, that is the requirement that is in the future.
So because it's come to the council in the past, and we have acted on it?
Right, then you continue to do so.
Then we continue to do so in the same manner, and our last actions on all of these has been motion whether to approve or deny them, is that correct?
Right.
So.
I'm just trying to clarify, because I'm hearing approve and I'm seeing acknowledge, and that's me. You know, you acknowledge it, because you can't do anything but say, okay, we get that.
Right, our responsibility to follow suit is what we've done in the past, I think, and do approve or deny it.
What I'm hearing is that we can't disapprove it anyway, because we can't. So, so we call it what we want, but okay, it's a done deal, all right. Except that we're just going to, you know, rubber stamp it, because that's all the choice we have. I'm just trying to clarify, that's all.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions of the relief associations, means they have members here that are very familiar with this process? Any questions at all, with anybody? None, okay, what was the wishes of the council? Motion?
I'll make a motion that we acknowledge the fire relief association increase in the benefit amount from sixteen-seventy-five to seventeen-seventy-five.
I have a motion by Warren.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Warren and seconded by Dave. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, aye, motion carries, three in favor, none against, one abstention.
They all do have to stay for the rest of the meeting, though, right?
Right. All right, moving on. Seven B, approved resolution 2014-51, the purchase real estate.
The Sack Center Economic Development Authority, they've been discussing the potential purchase of real estate located on Railroad Avenue, which was previously a lumberyard and is now used as a base for an excavation business and storage. The city's long-range plan envisioned this area as residential with a combination of single or multifamily dwellings. After the EDA discussed that, they wanted to make an offer on the property. With the source of the funds for the purchase, if approved, would be pooled dollars from Tiff District 1-1. This property would qualify due to the redevelopment nature of the project. And what pooled dollars are, are funds, residual funds in that Tiff District 1-1 that were allowed to use within the development district for these types of uses. The reason that it has that flexibility is because it's a pre-1990 district. In addition to the purchase price, Tiff dollars could be utilized for cleanup of the property, and then the city could then market it for its intended use. The offer was submitted to the seller, and at the time of the packet, I had said if the purchase amount is agreed upon prior to the meeting, the council will be asked for approval. The purchase price was agreed upon, that purchase price is eighty thousand dollars, and they did execute a purchase agreement with the understanding that it would be subject to city council approval tonight. So I do have the, I did put in the packet for you, and the overall view, or the aerial view of the property, it's lots six through ten, and it's the property that is owned currently by Kenny Zare or Billy Zare. I did put in your packet for you, resolution 2014-51, approving the purchase of the real estate. And as I said, this is a recommendation of the EDA.
Okay. Any questions? I know this has been a process that's been discussed for, boy, many, many years. I can go back over ten years that we've talked with different, first it was Zare, Bill, and Billy's father, and then Bill, to get the deal done, but.
Just to clarify, we have surplus funds left over from this other district.
Correct.
Yeah, and we're limited in what we can do with that anyway, aren't we?
We are limited to use it for qualifying, qualifying costs or return it to the county.
Right, and this is a qualifying cost, because it's continued development, okay.
Any other questions? If none, is there a motion to approve the resolution 2014-51, approving the purchase of real estate as presented?
So move.
And seconded.
Motion by Keith and seconded by Dave. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Okay, moving on to C, approved resolution 2014-48, ambulance parking lot. Vicki?
At the May twenty-first council meeting, the council gave approval to solicit quotes to improve the parking lot at the new ambulance garage at thirteen-hundred Timber Lane Drive. Bids were open on Thursday, June twelfth, the results are as follows, we had three concrete bids and three bituminous bids, keeping in mind that both bids include the driveway in would be concrete, either way. So, you know, up to the top of the hill, so that would be concrete, and then the balance would be bituminous or concrete. I do have the lists in there. The concrete option was A&amp;J Concrete for thirty-four-two-oh-five, Worms Ready Mix at thirty-five-eight-fifty-five, and Ron Leach and Sons at thirty-eight-one-fifty, that was the three concrete bids. We did have an estimate of thirty-three-five, so we were pretty close to our estimate. The bituminous options are Riley Brothers at twenty-two-four-seventy-five, Markley Construction at twenty-two-eight-forty-four, and Central Specialties at thirty-one-one-forty-eight. So the city council, you need to discuss, you know, the option, is the concrete option the better option for us, or is the bituminous option a better option? And Tim from the ambulance department is here to discuss what his recommendation would be. I think some of the things to think about is the long-term maintenance of either type of parking lot, and what would be the best, and the use as well, in the interest of the city. As I said, we did estimate thirty-three-five for the parking lot, so we're pretty close to that. Also, keep in mind, though, we had a budget for other items, and, you know, if we stick to this one, and we'll have to stick really tight to the other items, we'll have more flexibility if we went with the bituminous, so. But I know that Tim has some, has a recommendation for you. Do you have any questions for me, or should we just bring them up here?
Any questions for Vicki?
The only question I, that concrete apron, that is not part of this cost?
It is included in either one.
It is, on both of them?
Yes, it is. This is an all-inclusive done parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Tim?
Good evening. You know, I was trying to weigh the pros and cons of both. Definitely the cost is a big factor with the asphalt. I guess the problem I have with asphalt is going to be the durability and the maintenance cost. And thinking it over, you know, we have three heavy ambulances that are going to be doing a lot of turning on that parking lot, and I don't know if maybe asphalt is the best fit on it. Maintenance, I've been told, you know, to seal coat it properly every year. Of course, you know, I guess we could shy away from doing it properly, but would cost pretty much a thousand dollars a year to maintain an asphalt parking lot. So, within the lifespan of both surfaces, I think, you know, concrete would be the way to go. But, you know, again, then we have to look at the cost factor. The twelve thousand dollar, you know, more for the concrete is a big chunk. You know, if we go to concrete, I know Vicki said that our budget is tight for this project, which it is. You know, we do still have a reserve that we could dip into, that's another option. But, you know, I guess it's up to you on what you guys want to do.
Okay.
I'm not sure I heard a recommendation.
I would, I would have to recommend concrete.
Okay.
Just because, I'm just afraid that, you know, especially the first year, we're going to be written into it when we start turning those big ambulances. If you look at other parking lots in town, including the fire department, I understand that we're not as heavy as a fire truck, you know, but they have, you know, concrete that they're turning and backing into, so. And that was one consideration we had with the concrete driveway when we're coming off of the street onto the, onto the parking lot, that's why we chose to initially just go with concrete there, so we didn't have that dip as we're coming off the street.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do, is, there's an apron, how long is the apron behind where they would come out of?
I think it's like three feet, right now.
Possibility to extend that to get the majority of the turning?
Well, you know, our, majority of our turning is, you know, lining up the ambulance to go back in the door, and that's right around the forty or fifty feet mark.
Yeah, yeah, then you may as well concrete the whole thing.
How thick of concrete are we talking?
Four inches.
Four? Is that going to be heavy enough?
The concrete expert is sitting in the audience. He says it is.
I know the basic pads are always four inches, but considering the weight and everything, I was wondering if four was going to do it.
With the heavier concrete, we use four or forty-five hundred mix, which is plain.
Okay. I guess I'd lean toward the concrete part, mainly because you're going to have a concrete ramp coming up, and if in the summertime, if it's ninety degrees, you come off there, you're going to have a dip right there, it's going to hold water. You know, you come off a concrete onto tar, soft, you got a track. Now, if you're turning anything at all, sharp radiuses, your tires are going to tear that tar up. I can see where the maintenance issues would come up.
I think based on the size of the rigs and the size of the future rigs, and obviously the size of the bays and the facility that we have there, there certainly not going to be smaller units, if anything, you'll see them being expanded upon, made larger, I'm assuming. So, again, I think I would personally would support the concrete option as well, just based on the type of usage and the long-term care. I do understand there's a significant dollar amount, and I guess if Tim is telling us that they're going to be able to be into the facility based on the budget that they set aside, including the fact of, we budgeted thirty-three-five for the concrete, and we're, you know, within a seven hundred dollars of that. I think we're still within our budget fairly close, and they'll have to make up those differences somewhere else. But my recommendation would be the concrete as well.
Sir, anybody wish to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2014, authorizing improvement of the parking lot with concrete, with the bid going to A&amp;J Concrete.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the resolution 2014-48, authorizing the improvement of the parking lot to A&amp;J Concrete for thirty-four thousand-two-oh-five, can I add that?
Yes.
I have a motion to second.
Second.
A motion by Warren and seconded by Dave. Is there any discussion? I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Thank you. Okay, moving on down to action item E then, approved cost share and cost improvement on Hickman Development. Extension, Vicki?
I don't know if any of you have been out there, but Hickman Drive, they have completed the work, the ditching and the restoration for that fifteen hundred feet of Hickman Drive that we've been working on. And then we have the issue of the roadway from the end of the existing asphalt down the hill, so between the existing last two residences. We have some issues with water discharge off the end of the asphalt and off the curb, and it creates the ruts down the side of the road and wash, and there's quite a few washouts. So there's considerable maintenance that city staff has to do each year. We've tried bringing in some regrind, we've tried Class One, we've tried various other ways to try to contain the washing. So we did look at a couple of different options that we could do out there. And I give you option one, we can just continue with repairs when they need to be done, we're out there doing them. We had the option of the hand-formed gutters that were out there, to remove them and replace them, I mean, they're pretty shot. And the other one, we could pave the road, without the understanding that sometime in the future, if we ever extend that, those utilities out there, that would have to be removed. So that was kind of the thing that stopped the council in the past twenty-some, twenty-five years from tackling this issue, was because someday we thought water and sewer would be extended out there. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. So what we did was, we had Riley Brothers were in town, and we took them out there, and they gave us an estimate of the project. They quoted sixty-five hundred dollars for three inches of asphalt, and seventy-four fifty for three and a half inches of asphalt. And so how that was done was, at the end of the curb or at the end of the existing tar, the curb lines run another about fifty feet, so that's thirty-two feet wide. So we would go curb to curb that for fifty feet at thirty-two wide, and then the next eighty feet going down the hill, we would gradually narrow it to twenty-four feet. So we'd bring it in four feet on each side, so by the time we get to the bottom, or to the end of their property lines, I should say, we'll be twenty-four feet wide, which is the width of the existing gravel road. So I don't know if you want to call it a funnel, how you want to call it, but then the machine, the asphalt machine, we would make a machine-formed curb to keep that water within that curb line, and then do discharge at the end. So that was kind of what this estimate was that Riley Brothers had given us. I did contact both property owners on the end, and I told them that I could make a proposal to the city council that if we, that it might be acceptable to the council if we did that option and then said split it a third to the city and a third each owner, one on each side. And that was what we had proposed to them. I did have response back from them, kind of a counterproposal, if you will, and that they felt the city should pay two-thirds, and the two of them would split the other third. So that was kind of the feedback that I have from them, that was concern that, you know, we put those formed those formed curbing in there, and that if the city tore it out when we were plowing or whatever, and there would be repairs, and they didn't necessarily want to be responsible for those repairs or replacement in the future. So I bring it to the council with the original recommendation of the city pays a third and each pays a third, with the understanding that I've kind of had a counterproposal from them that the city pay two-thirds, and they each pay, you know, a sixth, basically. So if we're looking about, if you say a seventy-five hundred dollar project would be twenty-five hundred for each of us, in this other scenario, the city would pay five thousand, and the two of them would split twenty-five hundred. So I bring it to you for your discussion, and what this would basically do is eliminate a lot of maintenance issues with the city, is what the benefit to the city would be, the benefit to the property owner would be, they wouldn't have the washing, and they would have asphalt out in front of their house, so.
Vicki, looking at this from a, say we were doing this project somewhere else, and it wasn't an issue of maintenance, what would the cost share be in those types of scenarios?
In a cost share like that, this is new construction, basically is all the property owner, all the developer, if it was a new developer coming in. If it's city-initiated, you know, if it's gravel now and it goes to asphalt, it's mostly the developer's responsibility. On a reconstruct, if you wanted to call it a reconstruct, then it's like a fifty-fifty. So this doesn't fit either of them, really.
I understand that, but if we were to look at this as similar to, we're going to pave issues in our community that are currently gravel, like we've been talking with some of the other gravel facilities, we've always been talking and looking at those, and that had nothing to do with maintenance at that time, it's just getting used from gravel to asphalt of a fifty-fifty cost split, is that correct?
Let me think here for a moment.
Take Pendergast or Center Street, how would either one of those been assessed?
When we were going to do Pendergast, the assessment to the property owners on the west side was going to be fifty percent.
Okay.
Because it was considered reconstruct and not new construction.
Okay. Is there any questions for Vicki at this time?
I guess I go, you know, I know we've got it on the charts to change everything that's gravel now to pave and something in the future. If we would do that, street, pave the whole length of it, we would probably be putting in all the sewer services and everything at that time, full length, I would think, because we're not going to tear up a perfectly good road to put it in.
It's currently not on the schedule to?
This, this road was not, because this is considered more of a rural road.
Right.
The ones that were on to pave all the gravel were like the Block of Ash, Block of Pine, Pendergast Center, Lincoln Loop, those ones that are currently used, and this one was not on that list.
Due to the fact of the infrastructure and future development.
Yeah.
They don't have this platted out anyway, there would be no way of knowing where the services would go.
No, this proposal is just go to the end of the existing platted developed property.
Existing properties, okay.
Because I thought that field at one point was platted out.
There's outlots out there.
Or outlots.
It is outlots.
It is outlots.
It's not platted into individual lots.
I just don't want to spend a lot of money on it that I have all of a sudden someone build a house in the middle, and we're going to tear it all up next year.
That's my concern, is that if it does get developed, it's going to get dug up, because all the water and sewer have to go in.
Correct. And that's what's prevented any action in the last twenty-five years on it. And so it was like, okay, what is, you know, the possibility in, you know, in the next ten years or fifteen years? Or do you envision a developer coming in and buying that property between there and Ferry Lake Road and developing it? And putting in sewer and water, and I believe a lift station and that type of thing.
I think one of the, I mean, I know I had spent quite a bit of time out there looking at it, I hope everybody else had a chance to go look. But I know, you know, several of the discussions I had with Tom and Dave, and I wish I would have been here tonight, but it was certainly the ongoing maintenance, I mean, you're going to continue to invest a thousand dollars a year. I mean, in a few short years, you've got this investment certainly covered, and then you have something that's going to last, you know, up to twenty-five years. If that's how long we're going to wait before it ever gets developed, it's hard to say. It could be five years, it could be twenty years, I don't know. However, what we currently got there is a problem, and it's not just a problem where the gravel is today. It's a problem further, further up, because what happens is, is the tar stops, and then all of a sudden the gravel begins, and then the driveways are right there, and all of a sudden now we have all of this washout. In some cases, they can't get into their driveways if it rains hard. And that's, that is a maintenance problem, and. rains hard. And that's, that is a maintenance problem and I think to be honest with you, I wish we would've probably addressed this several years ago. At one time, there was discussion that it was going to be all costed and the developers from past discussions, I haven't talked to, there's new develop, new owners of properties now, but in discussion with past employees of the city, I understand that there was a, a agreement between the two developers to sell the tire cost to blacktop it all the way to the end of their property. So, you know, there's been a desire there to get this done so that we address the water issues at least past their, their properties. So, we can do something about all of the runoff and the continued maintenance. So, now we have, you know, an issue again with just updating the road, tremendous amount of rain and washout, most recently, obviously with all the storms. And again, we're looking at another, you know, thousand dollars potentially a year to continue to maintain it. For sixty-five or seventy-four fifty, it seems like a good investment.
Yeah. So, so the thousand dollars of maintenance is just for this section? I mean, it's a fifteen hundred foot road.
Yeah, I'm just talking about when we bring in stuff for washouts and go out with man hours and everything just to repair.
Just to repair this section.
And it depends on how many times it rains in a year. So, that's kind of an estimate.
That makes sense to me. I mean, we're paying this money just to maintain the road and we should pay that money and pavement be done with it.
Right.
But I think if the agreement is for fifty-fifty on everybody else's road, then this has to stay at fifty-fifty or everybody's gonna be at two-thirds, one-third and, you know, we just keep going down that road.
So, in this particular case, if I'm hearing what you're saying, Dave, and I would, I would agree with that is fifty percent of the total cost would be shared upon, would be the city's cost and the other fifty percent would be shared between the two property owners or bear it on the two property owners.
Yep.
Twenty-five percent.
Yeah, and, and, you know, for us, that means three or four thousand dollars and that means four or five years' worth of maintenance.
Right.
Well, that's not a terrible payback for us. We could certainly live with that.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
I just, I'm just wondering what type of traffic and is there a lot of traffic that goes?
There's a lot of traffic. You'd be amazed how much traffic goes through there because a lot of those people go out toward Ferry Lake Road or people coming from the north end come in that way.
Is there any heavy vehicles?
Um, most of the heavy vehicles are garbage trucks.
Okay. Okay. And that's twice a week at least?
It'd be about six trucks a week. You have three services and they each come in with garbage and with recycling.
Yeah, and school buses.
That's, I guess, that, that would be, I would recommend the three and a half inch myself.
Okay. Is there any, Vicki, in regards to, would we consider assessing this over a period of time to the developers if it becomes an issue of the cost?
I could, we could do that. We have done that in the past where we have allowed people a couple of years to pay for it with their property taxes and I can certainly offer that to them if they so choose. You know, I, I did mention it to them that that was a possibility. And if we do that, we would just have, sign an agreement that they would waive a hearing and agree to it. And then that doesn't have to come back to the city council if we decide to do that. You know, if you're, if it sounds like you're going to recommend going forward with a fifty-fifty, I would have to go back to them and let them know that. And if they're accepting of that, we can proceed. If they're not, I guess then we wouldn't be going forward unless it came back to the council again.
Okay.
The one question I got with that is if we do go ahead with the project and three years from now, say someone, we decide to go farther and put services in, are these people gonna get a, a break on the assessments when it's all tore up and redone again or are they gonna get a double M?
Typically, typically if it's before the lifespan that there is a credit.
Okay.
Given.
And you're talking to current landowners?
Current landowners that are paying that fifty percent or follow the sudden, three years from now that road gets tore out in front and put services in because of development farther west, are they gonna have to pay for that road all over again or are we gonna give them a credit?
We've credited others in the past.
What we would do is we would look at how much that they paid and then that would be prorated, the balance of the life that was still left in that road, they would get credit back for that.
Okay.
What is the, well, maybe nobody here to answer that question. What would be the life expectancy of this type of a project?
Our average duration on the regular road surfaces is forty years.
Forty years. Not for this kind of a road, though. I mean, that can't possibly be the life expectancy of this kind of a road.
Well, our roads out, you know, our roads that are like a two-inch lift and an inch and a half lift, that's three and a half inches, like out here on our other streets.
Yeah, but they're all, I mean, they're all curb and gutter and everything too.
And they're curb and gutter, right.
You know, this is, this is not.
Right. Well, see, the bituminous and the curb and gutter, they have two different lives too.
Yeah. Well, I realize that.
So, I'm just talking about just the bituminous.
I just can't imagine this is a forty-year road. This is almost a temporary fix.
It, it possibly could be. You know, well, we, I can have the city engineer look at that too.
My guess is, my guess is at this point, we can offer that we would go fifty-fifty, but I don't think there's anything to approve because I don't know if they're gonna go on that either.
I think what we do, my, my recommendation would be is that we would move forward with the fifty-fifty option to be consistent with all of our other reconstruction projects in that we would go with a three and a half inch lift and that we would offer the, the cost bear to the property owners on a two-year, twenty-four or thirty-six month assessment, whatever it is that Vicki, you and them can, can propose or to work out. And if that's not gonna happen, if the property owners are not engaging to that option, then I guess we will either bring it back to the council to, to have further discussion or it will continue on as is.
That's, I mean, that's, that's kind of where we at. We don't have anything to approve. All we're doing is offering a different, different alternative right now.
Well, I guess it would be kind of like you're approving it under this scenario, under the fifty-fifty scenario, basically.
Well, we're, we're making this offer. Now, we're counter-offering.
Right.
Okay, we made, I think we're making a counteroffer. I don't know that we need a motion. I'm sure approval of the general consent is enough for that.
I think if the, if the council would agree with general consent, that Vicki would move forward with the main, with the
Terms.
With the terms, as I just outlined, I guess I'll use, to replace the existing pavement with a fifty-fifty split is outlined with the three and a half inch bituminous at seventy-four fifty with the option to put on the property owners' assessments of up to three years. Is the general consent?
Yep.
So...
Lauren, you need a clarification?
Do I need to bring it back then if they agree to that?
No.
Okay. Just making sure because Riley Brothers is only in town for a short period of time.
We're making this offer now. If they accept it, then it's accepted.
Okay.
Yep. Warren?
No.
You okay?
Yeah.
Keith?
If they go with this, then we can do it, but...
Okay. Vicki, do you have any clarification?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. So, general consent, we'll move that forward based on the recommendation. Okay. Moving on to unfinished business. Vicki?
Okay, we have the Center Street meeting. If you recall at the meeting that we had previously, we were gonna set up where the property owners could come in and review the plans more in detail. That's Monday. It's actually June twenty-third, not January twenty-third at five-thirty PM. I will post that, that a quorum of the council may be present. So, if any of you wanna come to that meeting and look at the plans more specifically and talk with the landowners, you're certainly welcome to do so. But the city engineer will be here, he'll have the plans and they're invited to attend. So, just information purposes for you if that's something you would like to do.
Okay. I will be out of town, but I would recommend if any council members can be here to talk with the landowners, that would be great.
I should be able to.
Okay. Moving on then to meeting with Downtown Bars. Vicki?
Uh, it's the outdoor events meeting. If you remember last fall, when the Downtown Bars presented the council with a proposal to allow an additional street dance each year, they were proposing a Halloween crawl and the proposal would require an amendment to the code. And at that time, you did not approve that due to some short timeframes and some other concerns. And at that time, you directed staff to meet with the owners so we could talk about what our expectations of the city are when they hold these types of events and to discuss with them issues that we've had, whether it be complaints, what works, what doesn't work. So, Chief Fredericksen and myself, we met with the representatives last week. We reviewed all the issues. We discussed how we could accommodate those events, but how, but yet be considerate of the neighborhood. So, that's really what we wanted to do and how we could stay in compliance with liquor laws. So, we have the liquor laws to deal with. You know, we want them to be able to have a successful event, but yet we want the neighborhood to still be happy with what it was. So, the meeting, I thought, went very well. They're, they are expected to ask the council to amend the code for an additional street dance and we recommended that request be made after the Sinclair Lewis Days so that we can, you know, this is a trial run now. These are the different, this is our expectations for Sinclair Lewis Day's dance and kind of we'll be reviewing that afterward and possibly considering an amendment. Many of them have these outdoor events outside, outside their bars all the time. Sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. This might be an alternative to them individually having them, just to have one additional street dance and be done with it. I can't say for sure that's how they'll wanna proceed, but I thought it was a good meeting and they were, seemed happy when they left. So, that was good.
Did every bar owner attend?
We had all but one. We did not have a representative from the Mustang.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
I, I still question why we're amending the code because we can approve this anyway and it hasn't happened before. So, if we were to approve it for this year and it doesn't work out, well, that's fine. We approved it once, it didn't work out.
The city council does have the authority, I guess, to deviate from the code. It says we can have this many events a year. That's what it says in the actual code and you can, you can deviate from that.
Close the park road for, for a run and, you know, I mean, obviously, we can do this without having a code to allow it. And, and, and once it's in the code, well, then if you don't wanna do it anymore, you're changing the code back again. I'd rather try it out once.
That's an option too.
And if it works, fine, change the code. But if it doesn't work, why change the code just to change it back again?
Right.
So, you wanna take that under consideration as you talk with the bar owners?
We'll be meeting with them again after Sinclair Lewis Days.
Thanks, Dave, very good point. Any other questions regarding to the meeting? Okay, we'll move into new business, K-9 policy.
Uh, the SOC Center Police Department, we've been researching the, establishing a K-9 unit and establishment of a K-9 unit has, brings a lot of questions. I'm sure people have a lot of questions, both the council and the community. It has, people have concerns about it, but there's very, a lot of benefits to it as well. And so, I would recommend that the department, like Chief Fredericks and Officer Jensen, who is the officer that's interested in having the K-9, meet with the policy or operations committee. I'm not sure which one you'd like to discuss it more in depth and we'd have a proposal at a future council meeting. So, I guess what I'm looking tonight is to send a committee, it is both policy and operations. So, I'll leave it up to you to decide which committee should take a stab at this one.
What's the group feel like?
Well, I'm on both committees, so it doesn't matter too much. My gut feeling is that maybe operations should look at it first.
I was thinking it's, it's kind of a fundamental thing, which, you know, does it, will it work operationally with our police department, financially, those types of things. I know it's gonna have a significant impact on the discussion, I think, as well. So, it might have to go back to that policy as well.
Yeah, it might go back to policy. Once operationally, we have a thing that we think will work. Cause I think if, looking at it strictly from a policy point of view, be an awful lot of questions that wouldn't be answered.
Okay.
So, I think operations at this point, we'll look at that. Keith, that you?
Yep.
You and Dave, right? Okay. So, we'll move that K-9 discussion to the operations committee for review and if any council members has questions between, during, now and then, talk with Chief Fredericks and or Vicki and we can hopefully help you answer all your questions. Okay, moving on to B, Teamsters Unit Three Twenty Public Works Contract Discussion Opening. Vicki?
It's really what it is. See, we received our request to open discussion on the Public Works Teamster Union contract renewal and this would be for the contract that expires December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen. So, we'll be working on that and I know the police unit is up as well. So, a lot of times we'll run those kind of side by side as we go through negotiations. So, I just wanted to bring that up. That'll, we go into Personnel Committee and we'll take it from there. I haven't had, I asked them, rather than coming in and handing us the proposal, that if they could send it to me in advance, so the Personnel Committee has an opportunity to review it and be ready to counterproposal right away. Otherwise, that first meeting is sometimes kind of wasted. So, they agreed to do that.
Absolutely. Okay, very good. It's just kind of an FYI, that's that time of year again to start the negotiations, union contracts, so. Moving on then, we are in our consent agenda. We have a number of things on our consent agenda this evening. It's due to Sinclair Lewis Days and things, so I'll try to get through these as clear as I can. To start with, we have our schedule of claims for unpaid claims of one hundred and forty-seven thousand, one fifty-three, sixty-two, paid claims of nine forty-nine, eighty-two for a total of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, one oh three, forty-four. We also had our May checks, check numbers twenty-one, ninety-six E through twenty-two, thirty-one E and thirty-five, sixteen through thirty-five, two twenty-three and four payroll ACHs for a total of eight seventy-nine, oh ninety-two, oh seven. We have a resolution number two thousand fourteen dash fifty, accepting contributions. The Lions Club of SOC Centers contributed a seven hundred eleven dollars and sixty-one cents for the skating rink and Robert and Jeanette Stansbury of thirty dollars for the senior center and I thank them for their contributions to the city. We also have a gambling application for exempt permit, request from the Knights of Columbus, Council Forty-eight, sixty-three for bingo on July thirtieth to August third, two thousand and fourteen at the Sterns Colony Fairgrounds. We have a request from the Downtown Bars for a temporary extension of premise permit and road closure of Sinclair Lewis Day's street dance on July nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen. The road closure request is a one-block area from Main Street stoplights to Oak Street. The bars plan to close the road at five PM for setup and reopen at two AM following cleanup. The fenced area will be from the east side of the red carpet across the Main Street drug into the intersection of Oak Street. The street dance road closure permit application has been sent to Jody Tech at the county following tonight's approval. We also have a request from Tina Roddy, doing business as Mustang Bar and Eric Kellerman, doing business as Nextdoor Bar and Lounge for a temporary extension of premise permit for fundraising benefit for Kenny Steppen on July twentieth, two thousand and fourteen. That's Sunday on Sinclair Lewis Weekend. And we also have a request from Eric Kellerman, Nextdoor Lounge for a temporary extension of premise permit for a fifth anniversary party on August second, two thousand and fourteen. Is there any questions to the consent agenda as presented?
Just one clarification. I know it says it's for a fundraising benefit for Ken Steppen, but it's actually the bike run that's been held for the last seven years or eight years. It's not, it's under Kenny Steppen's name, but it's actually benefits for ALS. So, just a clarification on that.
Okay. Thank you. I know you're really heavily involved in that. So, is there any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So, move some.
Motion by Keith, seconded by Warren. Any discussion? I'll call the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Extentions. Motion carries. Four in favor, none against. All right, we have two additional things in your agenda or on your agenda for the informational items. And first thing is, just as a reminder, not just information, informational, that Andrew Rusling will advance the step three of the wage scale effective May thirty-first. This is according to the approved union contract with the Public Works Department. So, we got people that have years of service are moving up the scale. And then we also received our standard imporers credit rating adjustment. As you can note in there, the city went up in their rating, which is great. We went from an A-plus to a double A-minus. The more As, the better. So, that's great. We were at one time a B-minus. So, that's been steadily increasing. As Vicki and I discussed, you'll see it will go up significantly. There's a potential of it to go up significantly with the, when the hospital debt of twenty years is paid off because the standard impors and all of your rating is truly based on debt and it's really geared towards length of time. And that debt, the longer it's extended out, the greater the, the risk. So, if and when that hospital debt is paid in full, I think you'll see another increase in ratings. So, that just goes to show that staff and councils have been making very good decisions in regards to their long-term debt and their repay back of investments as our ratings continue to improve, which helps us get greater interest rates on future projects. With that, Vicki, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay. Hearing nothing. We have nothing else on our agenda this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Dave. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Keith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 This meeting is adjourned.